So moved.
Step to the podium and say a few words, that's fine. I'm not sure if it's on yet, is it there? Microphone, oh, I see, yeah. There you go, we had no mic. Is there anybody that would like to make a comment? Last and final chance. Uh, this will be the time, if you have something to say though, it would be nice to hear it now. Sure, just come to the podium.
In regards to the rezoning of six eighty, I believe it's six eighty.
Yep.
The meeting in front of me, but-
You are correct.
It's in regards to putting nine lots into one- Sure, it's a nice chunk of dirt and stuff like that, but nine resident- single-family residential units? I just don't understand how that would fit into the neighborhood. And I'm just wondering who might have came up with that idea? Because when the owner came over and talked to me and I said, "Look, in the backyard, there was another lot just like it." They put in four residential units and it was a perfect fit. But I can't see nine going into the same-sized property, which brings up issues such as parking. And it's just- I don't know, we're in- apparently when he came to Callwood, you guys wanted ma- maximum densification. We don't even have sewers. You just finished digging up Kelly Road to put a water line down there, why didn't you put a sewer line? Dig the hole a little bit deeper and put a sewer line down there. And I just- and then just getting back to the neighborhood concept and stuff like that, I don't think it's appropriate. And if somebody was gonna build nine homes, I'll guarantee everyone in them is going to have a guest suite, if you want to call it a guest suite. And so that would mean there would be parking for eighteen families, not nine. And that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, uh, did you give your name to our recording clerk, just for the minutes, please, sir? Thanks, Mr. Walker. Anyone else? Public participation?
And I basically reiterate the same things he was saying. Um, you know, it's not West Hills there. Putting nine homes across the street from my house is just gonna- doesn't fit with the neighborhood. There's a lot of cars that'll be going, if you think each house has two cars, that's gonna be nine times those two cars going up and down the road all day long. And it just doesn't quite fit in with our little neighborhood. You know, I don't really know what much to say other than it just doesn't work there. Uh, the density thing, you know, Callwoods were like seventy-five-hundred, and that's going to thirty-three-hundred for lot size. That's quite a bit different, you know? All the houses are double lots along that road. And to put in nine, who knows how tall they're gonna be or whatnot? Condos, basically, just doesn't work. It's, like I say, it's not a West Hills subdivision, so, you know, I'm hoping that you guys don't do it and, you know, stick with maybe three, four, five, whatever. It just wouldn't fit a lot better than having that. Because right now, that road's fairly quiet, and you add that many cars, we all have kids, playing on the front boulevards on the roads and stuff, and all those people speeding up and down, it just won't work. So, that's basically all I want to say, and just voice my opinion on it.
Great, thank you. And is there anyone else? Seeing none, then we will move forward into Mayor's message. We have a fairly lengthy agenda this evening, so I will be brief, but I wanted to let council know, and for those of you in the audience, Council Cullington and I, on Saturday, attended the awards presentation for the land aw- the Land Awards from the B.C. Real Estate Foundation. It- the Land Awards recognize initiatives that demonstrate leadership, innovation, and collaboration in sustainable land use in British Columbia. The awards celebrate and honor the nonprofit organizations, private companies, and government bodies behind these init- these initiatives, as well as highlighting the dynamic, forward-thinking people who make it all happen. Leaders in creating more resilient, healthy communities, natural environments, and making B.C. a great place to live. So Saturday evening, after a wonderful dinner, we were the proud recipients of the public sector of these Land Awards. And, um, Council Cullington and I received, on behalf of the city, this wonderful, um, it is a recycled glass product, as well as a black walnut, um, recovered and repurposed base. So, uh, I welcome every one of you to come up and take a look at that at some point. And, uh, our little envelope awarding that off. We do have a bit of a presentation up here that I think they're trying to- Getting, getting it working. Um, you can see the video that was done showcasing Callwood and what the judges had to work with in making their selection. We were up against a couple of fairly significant proj- projects, actually. Columbia Valley Local Conservation Fund of the Regional District of the East Cootenies, as well as the Fre- Frequent Transit Development Area Initiative out of Metro Vancouver. So, these are fairly large entities with substantive proj- uh, projects on the go that we were competing against, so once Ms. Marcy gets that up.
So while we're waiting for that to, um, get up and running, it's a nice opportunity to say that this is one of three awards and that the program has won this year, and it's really nice to see the recognition coming from our peers around the province, and it's really quite special. And one of the things we had an opportunity to do, um, at the gala dinner, was to, um, thank some of the people involved. But actually, it seems more appropriate to do it here with all of you folks listening. So, some of the people that, um, this program is really incredibly a team effort. It doesn't happen without an awful lot of people involved. Um, we've got fourteen, actually now fifteen, different partners involved in this initiative. Some of them represented here tonight. And, uh, you know, I think it's, it's incre- we were, again, we were sort of recognized for the incredible depth of partnerships that we've got involved with this program. So, thank you hugely to all of the partners. It was very nice talking to, uh, some of Van City folks tonight, who said, "It was really nice to see us recognized as part of this program, that was fabulous to see." I think it's also an opportunity to say thank you to the citizens of Callwood. We've had a number of people who've just kind of embraced this wholeheartedly, um, and you'll see some images of some of them, um, in the video coming up. Um, the Solar Callwood Delivery Team, Glenys is gonna be talking a little bit later on this evening, and you'll get a sense of what she and her team have been up to. Are very much the kind of the backbone of this organization. Um, I would like to thank council for their ongoing support of this program. I think it's, you know, again, you'll kind of, you'll see yourselves in various points, um, during the, during the video. And I would like to particularly thank the staff involved in this project, in particular Adia, who's not here tonight, but Michael, who has been a backbone of this program right from the get-go, and has put an awful lot of time and effort into it. It would not have happened without all of the people that we've been talking about. So let's-
If you recognize the voice on the video.
The city of Callwood initiated the Solar Callwood program with funding from Natural Resources Canada. By collaborating with fourteen partner organizations, Solar Callwood is bringing our community together to reduce energy use by providing clean energy solutions for homes and businesses. Our strategies for whole community change have been remarkably successful. Residents and businesses have become energy champions, taking hundreds of energy-saving actions, from simple changes to improve their energy efficiency, to installing solar hot water systems and other energy-saving devices. We're proud of the program's accomplishments. Solar hot water and electric systems at our fire station save the city at least a thousand dollars every year in energy costs. A solar-powered electric vehicle charging station at the local bakery is just one of ten public sites where vehicles can plug in. And more than two hundred and forty homeowners have completed home energy assessments, undertaking upgrades to save energy and money. Solar Callwood is characterized by diverse partnerships. Senior and local government agencies, post-secondary institutions, business associations, and others are working together to build awareness and uptake of greener practices. For example, Sooke Nation has provided considerable guidance, including solar hot water installation training, to support the clean energy sector. Royal Roads University Research Teams are monitoring the city's energy savings and changes in behavior prompted by solar callwood. And the Westshore Chamber of Commerce helps with outreach to the local business community. The city is also raising the bar for energy efficiency in new developments. The heart of Callwood is being revitalized as a mixed-use, high-density, transit-friendly city center with an innovative district energy system using heat reclaimed from the sewer system. While there are other municipalities with solar programs, Solar Callwood's community-wide approach to coordinating financing, information sharing, and partnerships is unique. In fact, Callwood has earned the title "Canadian Solar City" and has just received two provincial awards for excellence in climate action. So far, the greenhouse gas reductions in Callwood add up to over two hundred tonnes per year. That's like taking forty-two passenger vehicles off the road. We look forward to continuing our energy-saving efforts and sharing what we've learned with other communities in B.C. By working together, we can create positive change.
It's- I didn't hear your question, sir. Are we talking the Capital City Centre? It's not a topic for council discussion at this time, we're in the business meeting, but I'd be happy to have a chat with you some other time, Dan. And we're good then? All y- all of your, thank you, sir? Moving on then to adoption of the minutes for the regular meeting of council, October the fifteenth. All's in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Looking for receipt of the Planning and Land Use Committee, September twenty-third minutes? All's in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Uh, Planning and Land Use Committee, October first? All's in favor? Opposed, motion carried. And also for Finance and Admin Committee, September twenty-third? All's in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Uh, we do have a presentation this evening following up with that. Uh, Glenys, who is the coordinator for our Solar Callwood program, is here, and I'll call on you, Glenys, to get that one underway.
I wish I had brought a costume. So, um, I understand that I have a much shorter time than at the Finance and Admin Committee, so, um, we're gonna just stick to the installations and projections, and then have time for questions. There's lots of background information if that comes up in the questions about the current offers and in-kind contributions and outreach activities, so, let's get started. So as we know, Solar Callwood is a project that involves all of us, both the city operations, businesses, residents, homeowners, renters, working together for a clean renewable energy future. And we're doing a pretty good job. So, second only to the Sooke First Nation, Solar Callwood has achieved more solar hot water retrofits per capita than any other solar program in Canada to date. So compared to, um, a solar program in Toronto, compared to the Solar B.C. program, we've got more per capita. And over a thousand energy-saving upgrades have already been implemented so far, when we're using the Whole Home approach to find appropriate energy savings for everyone, given their building and their budget. And, this is a little bit different than what I presented to the Finance and Admin Committee. It's a better number, because not only have there been a few more incentives paid out for ductless heat pumps, but I also made a mistake when adding them up. I didn't include everything in the total. So now, we are at one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven energy-saving actions that have been taken in Callwood, which is pretty impressive, given our size. So, the ones in pink are the, um, actions that are eligible for Solar Callwood incentives. So our solar hot water systems, ductless split heat pumps, energy and water-saving kits that are provided for free to homeowners and renters, and electric vehicle charging stations, including the photovoltaic option. And then all of those other, um, upgrades, including windows and air sealing and insulation, and efficient heating systems, are, um, verified by home energy assessments that have happened in Callwood after they receive- the participants received a solar callwood discount for having an energy assessment. So that's where those come from. And the great thing, too, is that our energy-saving targets have already been surpassed and achieved. So, if we estimate the energy savings from a thousand solar hot water systems, which was an original target, that's six thousand some gigajoules saved, and energy savings from the Whole Home energy-saving upgrades in Callwood are already surpassed that, and we still have another year and a bit to go in the program, and we're going to, um, get even more energy savings as we go along. So that's pretty exciting. That's not to say we haven't had some challenges. So, discontinuation of the federal and provincial rebates for solar hot water systems have definitely affected, um, uptake. The Solar Callwood incentives are a little bit lower than at the start, and there hasn't been the take-up of the subsequent financing program as we expected so far. So we'll see if that increases in the time to come. And, as we mentioned, we've already got more per capita installs than anywhere else in Canada, so the early adopters are already engaged. And then if you look at the, the different incentives, so, um, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars were available from the federal government until March twenty-twelve. Five hundred dollars was also available from the provincial government until March twenty-thirteen. And the first ten solar installs, of course, got larger grants. And the current solar incentives are three thousand dollars. So Solar Callwood is holding the fort when it comes to energy, um, incentives for solar upgrades. And you can see that there's definitely a pattern with the how many grants are available, the maximum total incentives versus the solar installs. But, there's good news around the corner. So, what are our expansion targets? We're hoping to have, um, a hundred and fifty installations in total of solar hot water systems across the CRD. So, that's the part of the grant program that we're working on expanding to the rest of the region. And we estimate that we'll be able to reach those targets by March twenty-fifteen. We estimate that we will meet our ductless heat pump install targets, no problem, because we're almost there already. So we anticipate meeting that a little early. Our electric vehicle charging stations, we have enough for fifteen of those. And, uh, we believe that with the current rate of installs, we'll definitely see those installed by the end of March. And the same thing with the smart home monitoring systems, so. And how are we going to be meeting these targets? Well, um, by expanding to the capital region, they have seventeen times the, uh, number of single-family homes as in Callwood, so definitely expanding the market. And we've already identified a list of over one hundred interested homes and business owners across the region. And, as you're familiar, a new, more affordable system is bringing the price point back to the attractive levels that it was when we were seeing high installs. Also, by partnering with the CRD, we are going to be gaining in-kind contributions from the CRD and from member local governments for promoting the program, and cost-effectively meeting these, uh, new targets by decreasing the, um, uh, delivery team's budget, as well as collecting a cost-recovery admin fee. So, we are definitely well on our way to meeting our new targets. And, that I think is all I have time for. So, thank you.
Any questions? Uh, comments, questions from council? Council Day?
Thank you, I just wanted to say that at the last Finance and Admin Committee meeting, when we had the presentation from Solar Callwood, it was clear that our citizen members very much appreciate and support the attainable, uh, measures that, uh, Solar Callwood, um, has been offering to help us to reduce our carbon use and our costs. And, uh, offering the benefits to more residents of Callwood for another year would be, uh, well-received if that were possible.
Sorry.
What was that?
That was me.
Oh, it's you. Um, anyone else? Were you getting ready for something?
Maybe. No, no, I'm good.
Glenys, I would like you to just go back to the new targets slide, if you can back up a couple. Up at the top there says one fifty at three thousand. My paper here says one fifty at three hundred.
That is a typo in the report.
Report is wrong?
The report is wrong, yes.
On the same page with things on here, so, as long as I knew that that's the wrong one, we can work with it. Anyone else? Oh, good. Glenys, thank you very much.
And thank you too. And, if I may, I just wanted to show you two stories. I guess I don't have time. I wanted to show you the end here. Because what it's all about is the, uh, the homeowners. So, we see really happy homeowners who have hydro bills that are credits, and, uh, whose, uh, energy, uh, bills are very much shrinking, so it's working out for Callwood homeowners very well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving then, folks, into new business, uh, and staying on the Solar Callwood theme, Finance and Administration, six point one point one, Solar Callwood Update. Council Martin?
Uh, I'll defer, I was not, unfortunately, at the last Finance meeting.
And we'll have this with, uh, Council Day or with Finance?
Thank you, I'm just trying to tell if my mic was working. Thank you, in regards to Solar Callwood, uh, it was recommended, uh, by committee, um, that the Solar Callwood update be received for information and be forwarded to council, that, so that is why you received the presentation here tonight. We, we felt, um, strongly at the committee that, uh, there are some very positive, small, not nearly as sexy as, you know, photovoltaic, um, you know, electric energy from the sun, but lots of the, the small things that people are doing, changing light bulbs, you know, filling door cracks and changing windows and putting in insulation, is really having an impact and, uh, reducing the cost for people. And, uh, so we felt that it was worthy of council hearing the whole presentation, because it shows how a lot of the unanticipated benefits, uh, in solar callwood have really been paying off.
And we have a recommendation on here?
It was just that you received the report.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, there's another one, it's hiding. That staff be directed to research tangible initiatives that could encourage builders of new dwelling units to incorporate functioning, energy-saving technology. And that's for new development.
Just if you're moving it, I will second it.
I would move it, yes.
Okay, and Council Cullington, second, and any comments?
Thank you, yes, just by a way of a bit of additional background information, this was an idea that, that came up at the Finance Committee meeting. Actually, it was the CAO's suggestion, and we all thought it was wonderful. Because we, we recognize that the, the focus of Solar Callwood has very much been around the, the retrofit program. But there has been some slight tweaking of the language in the amendment going forward to NRCAN, that would allow us to use some of this on new buildings as well. Um, the school being one of the, the obvious places that we wanted to, to focus on. And, so there was a bit of a discussion around how do we kind of, given that, you know, we've adopted the solar hot water ready regulation, that we're encouraging our builders to build solar hot water ready, how can we encourage them to take that additional step and actually, um, install solar hot water and other energy-saving technologies as part of the original build? So that was the, the thinking behind that particular recommendation.
Thank you, anyone else? Call the question, all's in favor? Opposed, motion carried. Uh, moving on to the next item in Finance Admin, six point one point two, report, uh, CAO, re-Solar Callwood Capital Regional District Partner Agreement. We are without our CAO this evening.
Madam Mayor, I can probably handle that one.
Can you handle, pick that one?
Okay. If I could manage without the cobwebs. Thank you, um, council will remember that, um, we have partner agreements with, um, many of our partners where there's, um, some kind of, um, very specific kind of asks on either side, and obviously, in particular, where there's anything, uh, financial involved. And with the expansion of the, the solar hot water grants going region-wide, um, the Capital Regional District will formally become a partner in this program, and we're working with the, the Climate Action Group, they're already working with us. And, so that, um, as soon as we get the formal notification from NRCAN that we're allowed to go region-wide, they're going to be ready to go. So they've been already working away, um, in the background. So, the purpose of this, um, simply is to, um, provide council with that partner agreement. I believe it has already been signed, um, by the, the CRD representative. I think the, um, the partner agreement is intended to be fairly straightforward. It simply sets out, this is what's expected of the city of Callwood, this is what's expected of, of CRD. Um, I'd certainly be happy to answer, um, specific questions, and Glenys may be able to help me on that, um, specific questions, um, on some of the items. A couple of the items in there, you'll notice, um, are sort of still blank, because we don't, uh, for example, have a, a start date in there. But the, the recommendation is to authorize the CAO and the mayor to sign this partner agreement, um, obviously, once we have the, the authority to do so from NRCAN. So, it was recommended, and I so moved, that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the Solar Callwood slash Solar CRD Initiative Partner Agreement. Once signed, revised contribution agreement with Natural Resources Canada has been signed.
Second.
Comments, questions from council? Seeing none, call the question, all's in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Uh, next item, falling under Finance, is in regards to the Westshore Arts Center Legacy Fund Agreement?
I'm gonna defer, again, I wasn't there.
Is that one, Director Finance, are you able to help on that one?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. Um, council will recall that last December, during the budget process, there was unanimous support toward, uh, the establishment of a legacy fund toward the Westshore Arts Center, expected to be developed at, um... Royal Bay. I'm pleased to report that the ten thousand dollar initial investment into the fund has been made. The Victoria Foundation matched that investment with another seventy-five-hundred dollars. All that is needed now is, uh, for a direction to give CAO and mayor the approval to enter into an agreement to formalize, um, the use of the funds with Victoria Foundation.
I'm just looking, uh, I need a mover and a secondary, then we can have comments.
Yeah, I was just gonna move it. So, yeah, I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, and comments and questions, folks? Um, there was something here, if I can find it again, and... Had to get rid of my agenda notes again, and all my notes are gone, bye-bye. and all my notes have gone bye-bye. So, Director, just to be clear, that the funds donated or provided in this will stay intact in that account as a building fund towards the objectives?
Yes, the $10,000 will remain as capital in the fund. And once the agreement is signed, then anyone can donate to the fund. Each year, the fund will be allocated. The share of interest earned on the investments as from the Victoria Foundation as a whole. And those funds over and above the capital can be made of use of by the Arts Centre as directed by council.
Okay, good. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, called question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? And the final one under Finance, Report from Administrative Assistant in regards to the Granicus trial for webcasting. Is that one going to be you?
Guess so, because Chris isn't here.
There you go, lovely Marcy.
So, this is in regard to Granicus, who has done the trial with the city since, I believe, the first council webcast happened on May 13th. We had six months to try out the service. And since that time, we've had eight council meetings go on webcasting. They do have a program through Granicus that we can actually go in and see who is viewing the council meetings. And I'm not quite comfortable with that feature yet. So, I did go to our new website and I can see that we've had 222 unique visits to that page to view the council meetings. So, where we're at is council needs to decide if they would like to continue with Granicus or possibly look into different alternatives or not webcast. We have invested money into having the equipment to do the trial. So, there was an initial cost of close to $4,000. And if the city decides to go with Granicus, there's a cost of $600 monthly for the next year.
I need a mover and a secondary?
Madam Mayor, can I just ask a question first?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ensure, I believe Granicus is one of the less expensive in terms of the monthly cost for webcasting. Is that correct?
I believe when we looked into this in January, the other company that does it, that does it for numerous municipalities, was $30,000 annually.
Yeah, so quite a big difference. So, I would move the recommendation.
Seconder? Question, comments, Councilor Cullington? And then Councilor Martin?
Thank you. I like that we're doing webcasting. It's great that we're starting to get people coming to have a look at the website. I guess through you, a question to Marcy. Do you know other ways, other kind of opportunities to tweak and change? Couple of comments, I noticed that when people are looking at it online, it's very hard to figure out who's speaking. So, for example, if I'm watching it, I recognize people's voices. So, I can see who's speaking. But for somebody who's not familiar with members of council, it's very hard to tell who's speaking. And the other piece of that is, although we've got our little kind of name tags, of course, you can't read those on the webcast. So, people are not, you know, there are a bunch of people around this table and it's not clear who we are unless you happen to know that Rob sits here and the mayor sits in the middle. So, do we have any opportunity to work with Granicus to tweak it up a bit?
Probably not, unless you want to put a lot of cost into it. Because there are some amazing webcasts out there, but usually, it's the operational costs. When you see those ones that they actually zoom in on council's faces and you can see who's speaking, it's because they have someone operating the cameras. They have someone taking the minutes. They have usually four people or so working with it and also working the software. So, it's a cost thing that you'd have to have staff running it if you wanted to have that kind of quality. And you'd probably have to install different cameras and have somebody toggling back and forth between who's speaking. But that's not to say that maybe there isn't some kind of software later on that can happen, that might be voice-activated. It's just sometimes people speak at the same time and I don't know if the camera would know quite where to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any others? Councilor Martin, yes?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to our administrative assistant, number three. Is this a good staff? I guess from a council standpoint, like it's, you see it visually. But from a staffing standpoint, is this software that we would want to continue with?
Well, it's not really up to staff. It is a nice thing to be able to look back on later on. It's good to be transparent, so...
No, sorry. I'm guessing, no, sorry, maybe I misspoke. The question sort of more was, is it user-friendly? Like, is it staff usable?
Yes, no, it's quite easy to use. But another thing that council might want to look at in the future is whether or not they'd like to webcast standing committees. Because currently, we're just doing council meetings. And it is a possibility that we could do that.
There would be an added cost?
There would be no added cost. It's just a council decision.
Okay, all right. So, it's not about...
And it would be because we've also got citizen members on the committees. They would have to be probably spoken to and make sure they're comfortable with being on webcasting.
All right. Councilor Logan?
Thank you, Worship, through you, to Marcy. Is this something that's going to be evaluated on a yearly basis? I always say that because I, you know, I'm really struggling with the value for money, notwithstanding the transparency aspect of it. But, you know, $7,200 is a fair amount that we could use elsewhere if we're not getting good value, I guess. And the technology certainly has been a bit of a, been a bit of a challenge. Sorry, I'm just learning English in the modern world.
It's up to council whether they want to review it annually. I mean, I think we probably will look into options and if something comes along that's more beneficial to the city, we'd probably bring it forward.
I think Sandra has got some ideas in mind as far as making a greater connection with our new website and with the opportunity with this and doing some surveys and stuff around that, to see how people are feeling about what they're seeing on there. So, there's probably more information to come, but just not here tonight.
The communication manager is currently putting together a survey. And I believe one of the question on there is, are you using the webcasting service? So, perhaps they could do this annually to determine how many people are using it? Because it's still new.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Seeing none, called question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries? Moving into then, Planning and Land Use Committee, 6.2.1, Rezoning Application, 686 Donovan. Is that going to be... Who's taking that one?
Councilor Sullivan.
Councilor Sullivan.
It is. The applicant has applied to rezone the property from the current residential R1 zoning to the new small lot residential zoning in order to facilitate a nine-strata lot subdivision with lot sizes ranging from 308 meters square to 400 meters square in the area. At committee, there was some voices of concern from residents in the neighborhood. The owner, or the applicant has actually tried to meet with most of the residents within a 75-meter radius and has offered to meet with anyone wishing to speak with him. I don't know if those meetings have occurred or not. Apparently not. Okay, so, committee so moved that as zoning amendment bylaw, including provisions for required contributions in the community amendment fund in the amount of $2,500 per dwelling unit in excess of one and a contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund in the amount of 500 per dwelling unit in excess of one, be prepared such that if and when the provisions are made in a registrural development agreement for the following conditions, consideration will be given to the adoption of the amendment bylaw. And I am not going to go through and read verbatim this entire report. Sorry, guys. But they do actually address drainage, site access, energy efficiency, form and character, Donovan Avenue improvements and construction mitigation. They also moved that council direct staff to explore ways in which the clearing of vegetation can be legally withheld by the city. Until such time, the development is ready to be built out and report the results of this back to council prior to the time of public hearing. Align restrictions on secondary suites in their proposed new zone with those specified in the current small lot residential zones. And finally, investigate whether an error was made at the land title office that would affect the display of encumbrances listed on the title of the subject property.
Second. Questions, comments, council? Councilor Cullington?
Thank you. Through you, to the director of...
No, no, we're in the business portion of the meeting. I'll defer to the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, a couple of questions to the director of planning or deputy director. Obviously, sewer service came up as a concern. And I can see in the recommendation, the recommendation is connect within six months of the building going in. So, is the intent that once these lots are built or once the houses are built, they would already be connected to sewer by that point in time? Or would they initially be on septic?
There may be, through the chair, there may be potential for some of the nine lots to proceed on septic, but it's not anticipated at all, nine. And building would not be allowed on the balance of them until such time a sewer is available.
Okay, so there might be some staging that would allow that to take place? Okay. And obviously, those that were on septic would have to meet VHA standards?
That's correct.
In any case, okay. Thank you. Second question through the chair. Parking, again, both tonight and at the committee meeting was raised as a concern. The, we've got regulations around, you know, you can only have a secondary suite if there is ample parking space available. So, would there be, do you anticipate there being space on these lots for secondary suites in addition to the main home?
It would be certainly tight. And the spaces for secondary suites inevitably would have to be in the front yards because of lack of access down the sides of the properties or in the rear. If they cannot meet the requirement, then they would not get a secondary suite permit.
Thank you. Couple more questions, if I may. One is, at the end of the recommendation, investigate whether an error was made at the land title office that would affect... Are you able to give us a little bit more background on that?
Through the chair, I was at the committee meeting where that came up. It was a concern of one of the neighbors that they thought that they had spoken to a previous owner along the lines that there was going to be a covenant registered on the title of the property that would protect trees. No such covenant was found when a title search was conducted by city staff. And that is why we decided to follow up on the concern with some inquiries at land title office.
Okay. Thank you. That's all of my questions.
Councilor Day?
Thank you. I have concerns about small lot subdivisions, which is no surprise. I have voted against them a number of times. And this reminds me of another situation where I actually know people who live there now. When Ponside Terrace was developed, it is around the same size of lots as is being contemplated here. And parking is a major issue in that area. Even though Ponside Terrace runs off of La Torre Boulevard and there are some parking spots on La Torre Boulevard, people generally don't like to park far away from their residents. And even though they may not have suites in the homes, young families tend to grow up and they learn to drive and you have many vehicles per family. And I've seen this in Langford in their small lot developments, driving my daughter off to visit her friends. And I've seen the entire cul-de-sac completely blocked with cars, such that I would be very concerned if I lived there and I needed an ambulance or a fire truck. Like, seriously, you can hardly turn around in their cul-de-sac. So, I don't think that's going to be a problem exactly the same way on Donovan Avenue. But is it going to be a concern for the neighborhood? Yes, I think it is. So, the parking is a very serious issue. And having adequate parking for each home, as has been attempted to be described by previous developers, hasn't always worked. So, for me especially, I'm thankful that members of the neighborhood have chosen to come out and speak their minds on their concerns, which makes it easier for me to say, I have concerns about that. And in advocating for what's the best, what's the best way for us to have a prosperous and comfortable community for us all to live in. And I can honestly say that, you know, I've seen it tried out and it doesn't really work very well when, you know, people do not use their garages to park in. And I don't know how you can legislate that. They just don't. So, you know, the parking is a very important issue to neighbors getting along. So, I just think that nine lots seems to be too much and that maybe there's... Also, the other thing that I heard with this application that gave me some concern was that there is being done on a strata when sewers aren't there yet. And stratas do have a tendency to create multi-levels of complexity for dealing with later on. And it's my understanding that they aren't the preferred option when people are going out to look to buy.
Councilor Martin?
I'm just looking for some clarifications, please. If you look on page 62, second paragraph, through planning, could you just address the issue regarding discussion and recognize that the applicant would not meet or be approved by the Vancouver Island Health Authority according to the subdivision standards and so on? Could you just sort of expand on that for me, please? Do you see it?
You're on a different page.
Am I not? 62? Oh, sorry. It's page 62 of this.
Yeah, of the paper copy.
The hard copy. Page 13, I guess? Page three, excuse me. Page three, second paragraph, discussion recognized, is where it starts. I'll read it. How about I read it? No, you got it? All right.
Read it for the crowd?
Sure, I'll read it for the crowd. Discussion recognized that the applicant would not meet or be approved by the Vancouver Island Health Authority according to the subdivision standards, that construction would not be permitted on several of the lots designated for the treatment plant until connection to the city sewer system is available and that secondary suites must comply with existing bylaw regulations in order to be permitted.
Essentially, I don't, I can't relate exactly what VHA standards are fully, but they do relate to size of property, whether or not it's strata or fee simple lots. And as to the mechanics of a treatment plant or sewage treatment system, it may be that approvals could be obtained from VHA for some of lots at this time. But it's very doubtful that all nine lots could be, could meet their standards and hence the provision that anything that does not meet their standards will have to wait to be developed for when sewer is available.
Mayor?
Yep.
Continue on with that question. I guess, is this standard, through the chair to the planning department, is this standard that we would normally see people asking for a subdivision where they can't actually build on it?
Right.
As, like, this seems premature to me that we would be issuing something along this lines if they can't actually build on the lots because there's no sewer access. And I don't know, I don't know, maybe that's a common practice.
Through the chair, it's an unusual request, there's no question there. It's not something that does crop up a lot. The feeling of the owner is that he would like to prepare as much as he can for the ultimate subdivision of the property, and that involves doing the rezoning at this time, and doing whatever he can in terms of subdivision on treatment plants and whatnot at this time. But knowing that there will be a phasing, a further phase done at such time sewer is available.
I'm sorry, sir, the, we, we had, we had a committee meeting where there was more open dialogue available at that time, but this part is for council to have their conversation. And should it go forward, that there would be another opportunity, or staff, if you have any questions after, I'm sure staff will be able to handle.
Sorry, mayor, just continue on. Saying that, then, I guess I just personally feel a little uncomfortable in that I think it may just be premature. And I wish I had been at planning, so I could have sort of understood why the planning committee didn't see that as a premature thing, and perhaps I could look towards Counsel Sullivan, or, I don't know, who was in charge of planning, I'm not sure who was at the last planning meeting.
Actually, she wasn't there either. Oh, okay, so.
Maybe I can elaborate. And Counsel Logan and I sat in for our other two members who were absent on that one. I guess, you know, remember Mr. Cootree probably set it out in the most simplistic of plans. Because of the restrictions and the necessary requirements by VHA, it would be lucky for the applicant to, at this time, do much more than maybe four. The rest of it would have to be left in a state of openness, which would become basically the pool, the joint septic treatment, if I'm not mistaken. And it would operate in that manner until such time sewers were in the area, of which, once they were in the area, then he would have that six-month or whatever the timeframe was on their recommendation to get those units hooked up and before any others could be built in that regard. So that was kind of the gist of it at that point. There were a number of members of the public who were there, who also made comments around the concerns in regards to parking, many of the same things that we've already heard this evening. So I don't think that any of that's new. Maybe, Ian, you have more?
Thank you, worship. Having been the representative of the planning department at the meeting, I thought I'd just add a couple points to follow up on Counsel Martin's questions. Many areas in Callwood are pre-zoned for density above and beyond what could be serviced currently. So there's several large parcels that are currently zoned for residential that sewer are nowhere near those properties. So in that sense, this isn't something that's new. The second point is, there could be a subdivision of this land utilizing treatment facilities such as septic fields at lower densities. The applicant has made an application along the lines of the official plan designation for something that could only be facilitated through extension of sewer services. But that doesn't mean that in the end sewer service could not be provided for less units, as has already been discussed, through septic.
Any others? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? And it fails. Motion is, has failed. Moving on to six point two, report from, again, from Planning and Land Use regarding a request for proposals to select a consultant to assist in the creation of the Callwood Economic Development Strategy. Mr. Borghil, are you taking that one?
Yes, your worship. Sorry, I can't see the light from all the spider webs here. Just like to start with a clarification, that this report actually didn't come from the Planning and Land Use Committee, it came from the Economic Development Strategy Working Group, which was set up by council earlier to do the heavy lifting behind the economic development strategy. So this RFP that's in the package tonight was compiled through the work of the working group, city staff, and I'd also like to acknowledge Josh Schmidt from the Chamber of Commerce is with us tonight, who helped out with this RFP. The document focuses on taking action. It also tries to follow as closely as possible the goals and objectives of the OCP along the lines of sustainability and increased livability for Callwood. The timeline is basically taking us through to spring 2014, which is quite aggressive, but at the same time, we think it's doable, given the team that we're working with. I'd like to take note that the Finance Department has asked that we make sure that the gas tax funding that was originally designated for 2013 for this project be carried forward for 2014. So that's part of the recommendation tonight, which I'll outline shortly. I'd also like to add that some additional improvements to the RFP were suggested by members of the working group since it was attached to the council package. So I've got a little addition to the recommendation, if council would indulge me, as follows. Firstly, I stated in the report that council endorses the draft Callwood Economic Development Strategy Consulting Contract Request for Proposals, as proposed by the Economic Development Strategy Working Group, and designate up to $90,000 to be drawn from gas tax revenues in the 2014 budget for expenditure on the Callwood Economic Development Strategy. And if I could add a recommendation, that staff be directed to make any minor amendments to the Callwood Economic Development Strategy Consulting Contract Request for Proposals for clarification as required. Thank you. So moved.
Comments, questions? Counsel Dave?
Thank you. While I applaud the work that we're doing here, I just have one comment, and that is, I think it would have been very nice to have this come to perhaps the Finance and Administration Committee, for the simple reason of involving the public and offering an opportunity to have a more thorough conversation. So just my two cents, worship.
Counsel Sullivan?
Thank you. I share your concerns with respect to involving the public, but I am comforted by the fact that included in this RFP is significant public consultation in the development of the plan itself. So I have a high degree of confidence that our public will be consulted to death on it.
Counsel Collington?
Thank you. Very happy to see this moving forward. And I do have a number of picky comments on the RFP, and given your amendment, perhaps you'll just allow me to kind of forward those to you for your consideration. A couple of kind of bigger pieces, if you like. One is, this shows an aggressive timeline of presenting the final strategy to us no later than May the sixteenth. And I love kind of fast timelines, but at the same time, I would rather do it right than do it fast. And I think, as Counsel Sullivan said, public consultation is a really important piece of that, and I know from my experience, that takes time. So I would encourage us to kind of think along the lines of, you know, it's good to kind of keep moving forward, but at the same time, let's be aware that they're realistic timelines that really allow us to do what we want. So I, for one, would be comfortable seeing that moving back. Also, on the public consultation, I'm kind of looking and I'm seeing a lot of consultation with stakeholders, and I'm not really seeing that kind of public-public consultation in there that I would love to see included. And I, I mean, I look, for example, at opportunities, you know, with the Transportation Master Plan, we're trying to get this speaker series up and running. How can we kind of piggyback some of that? Because I think some of those presentations will probably kind of dovetail quite nicely. Can we take advantage of opportunities like that, making sure that we're really using our website while using all of our other opportunities for engagement? And I guess, I'm sort of seeing, you know, when you get down to number ten, there's a kind of a report that goes out to the general public, but by the time it gets down to that report, you're kind of a long way down the road. I'd kind of love to see something that kind of moves that opportunity for our residents to get engaged at an earlier stage. And I will defer to the committee in terms of how to put that in there, but I think it is, for me, it's an important piece to have in that RFP and kind of push that up, up the road. Thank you.
Others? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Moving into bylaws, folks, bylaw number one four five seven, looking for final reading?
Move final.
All those in favor? Oppose, motion carried. Looking to bylaw number one four five six, final reading?
Move final.
All those in favor? Oppose, motion carried. Looking to bylaw one five two two, first and second readings for Callwood Land Use bylaw number one five one, nineteen eighty-nine amendment number one three four four, two one two eight, two one three two, two one three eight, sucrode.
Move introduction?
All those in favor? Oppose, motion carried. Comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Oppose, motion carried. Motion to move in camera? Oh, don't wait a minute, missed one. Another one for first, pardon me, bylaw number one five two three, first and second readings, Callwood Land Use bylaw number one five one, amendment number one three five, for three ten fourteen eighteen and twenty-eight Whale Road and two six seven five Wilford Road.
Move introduction, your worship?
All those in favor? Oppose, motion carried. Comments, questions? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Oppose, motion carried. Now we can move in camera. Need a motion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you, folks. Candies are there?